And, okay. We are now recording this meeting. Today is July 21st. My name is Jocelyn Campbell and I am the Chairwoman of the Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals. And we are having a Zoom meeting tonight. Pursuant to the Governor's Order, which I need to read a little whereabouts. First item on the agenda is going to be 35 Castle Road. And pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 18. And the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting of the Nahat zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via the largest location as possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and their parties with rights and our requirements for this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen in, watch the meeting, may do so in the following manner. They may do so by signing into the Zoom via real time or by calling in onto one of the phone numbers that are listed also on the town's website and in the advertisement for the meeting. And so, let's call this meeting to order. Again, I've already provided the date, July 21st, 2020. As you all know, we wished we had this meeting scheduled for July 1st. A deep technical problem with the town's Zoom account, we weren't able to work on. So we are starting the meeting tonight. We have five members of the zoning Board of Appeals present on Zoom. And we're going to call that meeting to order right now. First, I'd like to introduce the board members. I've already introduced myself. But we have with us tonight Peter Barber. And he's, you can see him right here with the boat picture in the background. And Peter is a regular member. And Max Casper, also a member of the zoning Board of Appeals. And we have David McCool, also, it says Sales iPhone on David McCool's. And Donna Lee Leonardo, who's our alternate member, who is helping us out tonight because one member had recused himself for this hearing. So thank you, Donna, for coming tonight. And, okay, so the next thing we're going to do is explain the process. What happens here is we ask the applicant, let the applicant speak. Give the applicant an opportunity to present their matter. We also read the hearing notice from the newspaper. And then we have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And we also deliberate. And when we deliberate, the applicant, no one really can speak to us. That's just a conversation between us. And once the case is heard, we do our deliberation. We usually have some motions. We discuss the application of the Nahat zoning bylaws to the matter. And then we usually come to some findings and decisions. And then we'll notify you what those findings and decisions are. So the next step is for us to read the article that was, the advertising, sorry, that was placed in the newspaper for this matter. But I'm going to do that quickly right now. Usually we take turns, but because of the Zoom technology, I think it's easier if I just read it. So here's the advertisement that was placed regarding this matter. At 7:00 PM on the petition filed by Gwala Petrucci, owner of the property, 35 Castle Road Nahat, for a special permit and variance of front setback. The building inspector has denied the building permit stating that the proposed remodel is in violation of Section 5.03 of the zoning bylaws of Nahat in the following areas. The proposed front yard setback is 14 feet, where the minimum allowed is 25 feet. But the last thing that I'm going to read regarding to this matter, 35 Castle, is that prior to the last date that we planned for the hearing, this is a letter from the planning Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, the Nahat Planning Board. And it is dated June 25th, 2020. And this letter I'm going to read into the record for the applicant and for the members, maybe who haven't seen it yet. They should have all seen it by now. It says, "To my attention, Chair, Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals, Town Hall. Regarding 35 Castle Road, special permit variance requested at front porch that would exacerbate existing nonconformity with 25-foot front setback requirement." Dear Ms. Campbell, this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above-mentioned building permit denial that is on appeal. The proposed construction would add a front porch to the residence that would extend 14 feet from the front lot line compared to the existing 18-foot setback in an area that requires a 25-foot setback. The proposed construction would also, would increase the height of the residence by approximately 50%, more than double the total floor area of the residence, without violating other dimensional requirements. The planning board has no objection to this project should the ZBA grant the requested special permit variances that can be justified. However, the planning board is concerned about expanding the size of such a residence in an area that is subject to frequent flooding. The planning board suggests that the ZBA consider the views of the Nahat Conservation Committee before acting on this appeal. So, if all the members agree, I think we'll just get started with the hearing. Peter, Donna, Max, David, you guys are all agreement to get started?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Petrucci, um, let's see, I could take you off of mute there.
I wanted to mention about the Conservation Commission. I actually already had that meeting, yeah, enough. I had that meeting recently and they approved my plans. I recently was able to prove that my property doesn't flood. And I went through an engineering company to pull us out of the VE zone and put us into a more beneficial AE zone. Excuse me a second. So basically, I'm changing around the property. So the front of the house will be sort of a main entrance, facing Castle Road, as opposed to on the side. We're adding space to raise a family here. And along with that is sort of a covered farmer's porch, which is pretty similar to many other farmer's porches here in Castle Road. Being in Castle Road, there are many houses that are very close to the street with those sort of. So I'm not sure what else you'd like me to say about it.
Yes, could you just tell us, first of all, how long have you owned the property? And, you know, what are your plans total here?
So I bought this house in 2014. I actually own a property across the street on Castle Road as well. I lived there first, found out that Phil Bogdanos found his property and I just bought it, you know? And then, you know, met my wife and now we plan to.
The members have any questions for the applicant?
I'm trying to figure out which side, is it the back? The, yeah, the large decks face the ocean?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the back of the house is on the, yeah, is the ocean side facing the seawall in Doggy Beach.
Okay. I was just trying to get the placement of the house.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So, having moved you out of the, into an AE zone, does the things that you need to do to this house require you to bring it up to FEMA?
Yeah, so what I have to do is I need to eliminate, well, I'm bringing all the utilities up to the first floor. That's one of the reasons I need to add these to the front. Because, you know, fortunately, that space will be used as entry, we'll see a sort of utility closet. To bring the utilities up out of the basement, add those flood vents down in the basement wall and eliminate the interior stairs down to the basement, basically just call it a crawl space. So there are things I still need to do. Luckily, I don't need to lift the structure at all because those able to prove the height of the current structure is within the realm. I just need to do some work down at the basement for the improvement laws.
So is the scope of the project more than just the decks? Or we just happen to be looking at the decks tonight?
Yeah, so the decks are the only, the only parts of the project that will encroach on the setback line. The rest of it is in within setback. So as the board had mentioned, we do plan to throw a second level on top of this structure that's currently here. The current structure is only 18 feet from the street. So it's still within, you know, within, it was encroaching on the current setback line. I just want to add about four feet onto that as a, you know, as a farmer's porch.
Is there a basement? Is there currently a basement?
There is currently a basement, which we, we need to pull all the utilities and the electric panel out and bring it to the first floor into a utility closet. So that's one of the reasons we're adding that space in front of the house. So we have that space for utility closet.
Have you, have you met with Wayne about the, about those future plans?
Yeah, I've met with, I've been trying to get this finished for about three years now. You know, while in the velocity wave zone, it was a little bit more challenging. So I went the route of working with Woods Hole Group to, uh, to update the maps and they were able to prove to FEMA that, um, that I shouldn't have to be in the, in the V velocity wave zone here in this property. So, yeah, I did meet with Wayne multiple times. And, you know, basically I'll follow in the process that he had mentioned that I should follow.
Do you have, do you have a permit for that, for that other work yet or not yet?
Well, no, no, that's, this is really, it all hinges on this particular meeting. So, um, you all give me the right to build that front porch. But I'll leave all my plans again. And then, I think, once it's all squared away, I can go ahead and get my permit to build. Because again, CONCOM already did approve the plans to dig extra foundations, to add an extra space. That's been done. It's really just realized in the particular year.
Okay, yeah, because our purview is just going to be these decks. But it gets pretty complicated with the flood resistant construction if it's a substantial renovation. So just make sure you have that down. You're saying a lot of the right things, but.
Yeah, CONCOM already approved to put footings where those decks would, would be held up. So to dig in those spaces for those footings are already, sorry, it was the CONCOM.
Yeah.
Yeah, but does this, if, does this hit that 50% rule?
Yes, unfortunately, it does, because the cost of materials is so high these days.
Okay, all right. So you're aware of that? I just, I just wanted to make sure.
That's why I'm dealing with the basement issue, bringing the, not that the basement ever got water ever since it's been here. Bringing all the utilities up to the first floor and basically eliminating that as useful space.
Are you eliminating the basement too, right? You're going to have to eliminate the basement?
Eliminating the basement as useful space, yeah. It has to be considered as crawl space with flood vents, even though it never once in its existence had water. I still have to do that work.
Okay, again, I don't think that's all relevant to this, but make, make sure you get that down.
Yeah, no, CONCOM and I already spoke about that. I'm very much aware.
The only relief that we're looking for today is for that front setback.
That is it.
And the size of the project is no longer an issue based upon what I've heard from the applicant regarding FEMA. And did you get a letter of map revision on that?
I have a letter of map revision, which went into effect on January 25th, I think, or 23rd. But yes, so actually, I'm currently now situated in an AE 12 zone. My first floor is at 13.9. So as long as I bring the utilities up and become flood compliant with the flood vents in the walls. Again, CONCOM signed off on all the new footings I plan to pour with this front deck and the extra foundation in the front portion of the house where Mantri will be. It's really about just that setback line, making sure I can, again, my, my, the front of my house is currently at 18 feet. I just want to add four feet to that to make it a really nice farmer's porch to sort of align with the remain, the rest of the houses on this street, pretty close to me.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant before we proceed to ask if anyone is here to object or has spoken favor or against? No, okay. Is anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this project? Aside from the applicant, of course. Is there anyone on the line on Zoom or present who would like to speak in opposition for this project or of this project? See, a lot of people here, a lot of 16 members on, 16 residents or interested parties here on the Zoom. And so there's no one who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? So we'll move on to our deliberation if there's no opposition and no one else to speak, no public comment. It looks like. All right, so Mr. Petrucci, we will talk amongst ourselves now about your case and then we'll let you know what we decide. Keep listening in.
Okay.
All right.
I'll mute myself again, okay?
Look like we're just looking for one area of relief, like a special permit. We have the right to do that on that setback, 25-foot setback.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we had a, the, the one concern the, the planning board had, I think, was, you know, with the paperwork we got from the CONCOM, it appears that they didn't have a problem with it. So, um, that was the one, I think, the one question that they had.
Is that the planning board's objective now to weigh in on all hearing, all positions?
They, they should.
I think they're supposed to.
Right.
They haven't in the past, but I think they're supposed to.
They, they have, they have occasionally on bigger items, but I think now they, there's new leadership. So maybe they'll weigh in on all of them.
Can I ask you all a question? Does this, I'm just going to share my screen with the other four members for a minute. I want you to see this question I have. I'm looking at the bylaws and just looking at this area of frontage in all districts upon the planning board, approval of the planning board. This is regarding 502 special regulations regarding curbed streets. This is a curbed street, but not great curve. So the frontage for the lots on the, what's it, the degree of greatest curve is less than 100 feet. It says, do you think this affects our settlement?
No.
No?
No, I don't think so either, yeah.
Okay. And what's ever reduced to average of front of the yards? And I went up there and I did look at all the other yards and there's several that are closer than this to the street appear, appears.
This one I was curious about because I was almost wondering if he would have been able to do it by right under that provision there, Jocelyn.
Yeah, I think it's be close. I think he still needs the relief though, right? Just because we can do it. What do you think?
No, I think it actually reduces the setback.
Several of them were very close. So, but in no event less than 15 feet. But this would bring him to 14, so it's still a foot under that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, even if he could go that route, you know? Anyway, so I just wanted to look at that and see if you guys had any comment on that. So, um, all right, so we brought that motion. If anybody wanted to bring a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit and for the project to be built in substantial performance with the plans provided.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, a discussion on the motion? All in favor? I'm going to do a roll call, so.
Peter Barber says aye.
Peter Barber.
I think that's the easiest way to do it instead of calling people's names.
Everybody just say their name and say what you're saying.
Right.
Max Casper, aye.
David McCool, aye, in favor.
And Donna Lee Leonardo, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, aye. So that's good. Now let's see if we can, we do need to make some findings though. Need to make a finding towards special permit criteria that the change, extension or alteration shall not be more detrimental than the existing nonconformity to the neighborhood. So, we bring a motion to bring that finding. We need to do that. Put a special permit.
I'll make a motion that, due to the finding, we grant a special permit.
I'll second it, Jocelyn.
Second by Donna. A discussion on that motion regarding the finding? Okay, a roll call, please.
Peter Barber says aye, in favor.
Max, aye.
David McCool, aye, in favor.
Donna Lee Leonardo, aye.
And Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, so we have just granted a special permit to you, Mr. Petrucci, whereas we, we got to that front setback for your front porch. So what will happen is, is we'll write the decision as soon as humanly possible. And then there's a 20-day wait period for purposes of appeal for any neighbors who wish to appeal. And so once we're at that point, then you, you know, you'll issue the special permit and you'll record it at the registry of deeds.
Okay, so 20 days until I can obtain a permit for this?
From the date that I file the decision.
Okay, um, when do you think that, that might be?
Soon as humanly possible. We're all volunteers here and I don't have a secretary or anybody to write it up for me. But I will write it up and get it there as soon as possible.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll just try to plan ahead a little bit. Thank you so much. I appreciate all your time. I understand you're volunteers and I'm excited to add some space to my family here.
And I think it'll be within two weeks, you'll be, you'll have the decision filed.
Within two weeks I can go and reply for the permit?
I'm sorry, Max?
I'm sorry, that was me. So within two weeks I can apply for the permit?
Well, as soon as the decision's filed and the application period has run, as the appeal period has run.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so probably plus 20 days, right? Is that what you're saying?
Right, just keep an eye out. We'll do, like I said, as soon as we can.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, guys, we've got seven minutes till the next hearing begins.
Okay.
Do we have any business, any housekeeping to do?
Yeah, I think we do. Don't we have to, uh, to vote on that case? Is that tonight?
We're not doing it tonight because there's been a request to amend the order.
Okay.
You talking about Tulinda Lane? Okay. I understand their attorneys have filed a request to amend the order, to change the language a little bit. That's my understanding from Dan Script. Dan, if you're on the phone, fill us in. And so we, we're going to take that up at our next meeting. And we'll schedule one if we don't have one that's calling for us to meet in the next, you know, couple of, in next month or so. And so when it comes to this meeting here, the next hearing that's starting in about five minutes, I know that Max Casper was going to recuse himself and therefore Donna Lee is here, thankfully. And David's back for this next hearing. Um, let's see. Max, they still stay on, I don't know. He's going to recuse himself from the hearing.
Change paperwork.
We've got five minutes. Hi, David.
Hello there. How are you doing?
Good, Dave.
Good.
Good. I think it's kind of funny, the first preseason Red Sox game is on in a few minutes. Four statues that are out in front of the stadium, they all have masks on.
Oh, dear.
Hey, at least they didn't tear them down.
That's true.
I heard, I kind of heard a sad one. They were tearing down statues and I can't remember if it was like Nashville or, uh, you know, one of those places. But they had a statue of Stevie Ray Vaughan. I don't know if you all know Stevie Ray Vaughan, the musician. And he was wearing kind of a cowboy hat, wide brimmed cowboy hat and a long leather jacket, I guess, like a waistcoat. And they didn't know that it was a musician. They thought it was a plantation owner. So they started to destroy the statue before somebody let them know that it was Stevie Ray Vaughan.
Should do their homework first.
Jocelyn, were you able to let Dan Script know about our phone conversation on Willow, about Willow Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Peter and I had a brief conversation about the, um, he reported to me that, um, the applicant on that matter had informed him that there was some progress, the construction progress at the house. And so I did notify Council of that conversation.
Peter?
Yeah.
Quick question. Is there still, whenever we have town meeting, is there still a plan for the ghost guard housing to come up?
Yeah, I, it's really funny. I've been kind of remiss in, in that whole thing. But we were waiting for, we were waiting for some surveys. And when I say survey, I mean land survey. The haze company has been doing for us. We're trying to stake out the property. And the, the problem is they came up with some, in the paperwork that they found online, they came up with some irregularities in the way that the deed was transferred from us to the, or from the town to the US government, to the US government, back to the town and some things in between. The problem is, so we were waiting for that information before we're going to have one final meeting and then have a hearing so that we're ready for a town meeting. The problem is, they can't get into the, um, the, um, the registry of deeds is closed and the town hall just opened up. And they haven't been able to get any information from either of those locations because of COVID. So, I am requesting, I'm, I'm looking for a schedule to have a meeting in the next two weeks with the committee and determine, I think we're going to move forward with a public hearing anyways, just because we need to, to get information out there. Yes, there may be some little irregularities with both Dan Script and the surveyor and town administrator said that any of the things that were, that we found would not be, you know, game changers or deal breakers to whatever we want to do with the property, so.
Thanks for the update.
Sure.
What, what do you want to do with the property, Peter?
Um, well, the, the recommendation from the committee at this point is to essentially tear down all of the houses, the existing temporary middle, military houses, two by three construction. Do a little bit of leveling, the land, so that the, uh, what most people don't realize is you can't put a whole lot more houses than what's existing because the land drops off so sharply. If you walk behind those houses, um, the, after, I don't know, maybe 10 yards, it just drops off to a, almost a sheer cliff, but it goes down. And so the idea is to kind of level it out a little bit so that it's a little more flat with the road. And then it allows for a little bit more yard area. But essentially tear the houses down, level the lots and sell individual, 12 individual house lots. So that's our current plan.
Big plan.
Yeah.
And, and people that are on the zoning Board of Appeals get first dibs, correct? Thank you. Thank you very much.
I, yeah. That's the funny thing.
David McCool said it was okay.
Yeah, no, what's really funny is we did a lot of, we, we actually did a lot of research. And, you know, chapter 30, I think it's, is it 30B procurement?
30B procurement.
Yeah, so I think it's 30B procurement laws, like, yeah, this, first of all, the town has to deem it as excess assets. And then once it's deemed excess assets, then it literally goes out to bid. I mean, it, they put it out on the street and, and whether we bid out real estate people to sell it or basically put each lot out to bid, but it has to be done per the laws. You can't, we can't say, well, we only want Nahat people that, you know, people that live in Nahat to have an opportunity. It doesn't work that way.
Nope.
We got time, 7:31.
We're going to go, okay. All right, we're going to get started with the second hearing for the evening. Good evening, everyone. Um, today is July 21st. It is 7:32 PM. And my name is Jocelyn Campbell. I'm the Chairwoman of the Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals. We are going to start our second hearing for the evening and this is regarding 156 Bass Point Road. And I am recording this meeting. This is going to be recorded and it's going to be public record. If anyone objects to being recorded, they can get off now. Let us know, but it is going to be recorded. And so the first thing we have to do tonight is we need to, um, we read the Governor's Order in. It just takes a moment and I'm going to read that because we are meeting in this very unusual manner. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict. imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties who they write under requirement to attend this meeting may be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch may do so in the following manner, by logging into Zoom or by calling in on one of the telephone numbers that are posted along with the invitation to this. Okay? And so the next thing we're going to do is that we're going to, let me explain a little bit about, introduce ourselves and explain a little bit about the process here. Again, I already, just myself, I'm Jocelyn Campbell. Also with us tonight are four other members of the zoning board of appeals. We have David Walsh, who is here. And then we have Peter Barber and Donalee Leonardo and David McCool. All of these are members of the zoning board of appeals. And so what we're going to do tonight is, in a few minutes, I'm going to read the newspaper article that was also posted in the Lynn item, beginning two weeks ago for purposes of this meeting. And once I'm done with that, then we'll start the process, which is where the applicant gets to present their matter to the board. And then we will ask questions if need be, if we have any questions. Once we're done with the questions, we'll see if anyone wants to speak in favor or in opposition of the petition. And then after that, we will deliberate. When we deliberate, no one else can speak to us. That's when we talk amongst ourselves. If we have questions of other people, we certainly will ask them. We may bring some motions at that point in turn and then we'll have a vote on the decision on the matter and whether we decide it today or continue it and, and whether we, you know, come to a, you know, meeting on that, then we will adjourn. Once we decide the matter, then there's a 20-day right of appeal after that, once the decision is filed. So the first thing, next thing I want to do now is to read the newspaper ad that was placed in the newspaper. And it said, 7:30 PM on petition filed by Glenn Kennedy of Remade LLC, owner of the property located at 156 Bass Point Road, Nahat, for a special permit and/or variance for lot coverage, right side setback, open space and parking. The building inspector had denied the building, stating that proposed lot coverage is 43%, where the maximum allowed is 25%. The proposed right side setback is one foot or less, where the minimum allowed is 10 feet. The proposed open space is 37%, where the minimum allowed is 45%. And the proposed parking is three spaces, where the minimum allowed is four. Okay? And so the last thing I have to read tonight before we really get started is also very quick, but it's a letter from the planning board. The planning, the applicant should know that prior to us getting a matter, all the other town boards that are involved have a 35-day, at least one of them has 35 days, so they all get a chance to review prior to us hearing the matter. And this letter from the Nahat, Town of Nahat Office of the Nahat Planning Board dated June 25th, 2020, was to my attention, Jocelyn Campbell, Esquire Chair, Nahat Zoning Board of Appeals, regarding 156 Bass Point Road, special permit slash variance requested to add rear deck and side staircase that would reduce right setback to less than one foot. Dear Ms. Campbell, this letter shares the planning board's comments on the above captioned building permit denial that is on appeal to the ZBA. The proposed construction would add a rear deck and side staircase that would reduce the right side setback to less than one foot in an area that requires a minimum right side setback of 10 feet. The proposed construction would also reduce the property's open space from the current 55% to 37% to the required minimum of 45%. The planning board is concerned that this neighborhood already is still crowded with widespread non-conformity with dimensional requirements, that essentially eliminating the right side setback would result in a significant hazard to public safety. There would be no emergency access along the right side of the property, risking not only the residents in question, but especially the second residence in the rear of the parcel as well as the property next door. This could have an adverse impact on the entire neighborhood. Accordingly, the planning board supports the building inspector's decision to deny the issuance of the building permit. Respectfully, Nahat Planning Board, Daniel M. Berman, Congress, 2020. Those are all the things I have to read. Okay, so if we're ready, we'll get started and the applicant can begin with presenting their case.
Hello, Glenn Kennedy, Remade. And I thank you for, for giving us the time this evening. I hear they're, they're concerned, the planning board's concerned about the, the right side. There's three feet of space on that right side of the, of the house right now. Could be about six feet tall. There would be access, certainly not a seven-foot access through that, that right side underneath the staircase there, so you could access through. If that makes, if that makes any sense. We don't want to close it off so that you can't, we would leave it open underneath the deck and have access to get through there. It wouldn't be where you could run through it. A six-foot person is not gonna run through easily, but you could, you could get through there with about five, five and a half feet under the deck. There's only three feet on that side and the reason that we are, we're doing our plan was to, to look at it this way is that it's not so much for the deck, it is the egress of getting out of the house. That's the primary concern, but it was also trying to get parking in the back there where we could add a parking space. There was a structure there that was previously there when we purchased the, the house that was quite big, actually, and we took it down that.
I think you froze.
Um, we added permeable pavers and we added in dry wells under there to appease the, the water issue and the water draining issue. So we were trying to increase parking in the back space there. We have one parking space for the, the front unit for 156. We added a, a parking space for the back unit without trying to say that we have parking in a driveway and there's tandem, you know, parking there. We, we specifically went for three spaces, that third space being the garage, but two side-by-side parking there. If that makes sense from the plan. It did include a photo in the, in the proposal where you can see the header of where the deck would go at that five-foot height there. And I could push the, in that photo, I believe it was page five, I could push where those cinder blocks are. I could push those back about five feet if necessary to create more of a step underneath there.
Mr. Kennedy, are you done with your presentation? Because I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure, yeah.
First of all, who owns this, who owns this property here?
Remade, my, my, myself, my company, sole ownership LLC.
Okay, but I thought I saw something about a condominium on here with the.
About what?
Did you form a condominium?
Yes, so it's under, it's under condominium trust, Bass Point Condominium Trust.
Okay. And are any of the units sold?
The back unit, well, 150 is sold. So these are two separate units on, on.
You froze again.
Mr. Mr. Kennedy, you keep freezing on us. So, we'll just have to, could you repeat the answer? Because I have any units been sold and who owns what units? And what about the condo association in terms of, has it been turned over yet?
One unit has been sold. One of the two units have been sold. And Filomena Asante purchased 150, the, the back unit. She was going to try to be on the call. I don't know if she made it, but she sent a email in favor of the, in favor of the project.
Okay.
And we have, we do have a buyer for the front unit. We are, we are under agreement. We're just waiting to see if we get approval here to build the, the deck and staircase. And then we can, we can move forward.
And my second question is, why couldn't you, why couldn't you just build a staircase? Why does there have to be a deck there? That would solve all your problems, wouldn't it?
The right side.
I'm sorry, can't, you keep freezing.
For the, for the car, this is the parking, the second parking space to be able to pull in. And if we went down, straight down to the left, we have a, an egress to the basement underneath. And we would have come down right on top of that staircase, on top of that access there. We looked at many different, many different layouts for this and it was really trying to get the staircase over to that right side seemed to be the most logical place for it.
But my question is, if you were to eliminate the deck and simply do a set of stairs coming down, wouldn't this solve, that solve the problem?
We would be, we would be with five feet in the setback.
But that's what you're currently at, is five feet of setback.
Yeah.
But you have an eight by 10 deck there.
There's four feet going to the left. The deck is, so let me go over to the plan. Let me go to the plan here. So the, the staircase and the deck is, is nine feet total. And that is to the landing. I could narrow up the staircase, but it's only, I could narrow it up, but I need, I need at least 32 inches wide for that staircase. I could, I could narrow it up to give more egress on that side, but I don't think I'm gonna get three, I can't get three feet out of it.
But you also don't need an eight by 10 porch. I mean, you have a, you have a eight by 10 porch.
It's not really the, the requirement here. It is the egress. We've got three decks off the front of this house.
Right.
But I also, if you look at the photo where the, where it says a spatial area of deck with a rear view of the house. You see that photo?
Yeah, the, the pictures of the three decks.
Yeah, not the, not the front of the house, but the back of the house where the, where the, the illustration where I've got 10 feet and then three foot six.
Yeah.
If you see where the permeable paper is to the, to the back of, to the right side where that permeable paper hits the, hits the asphalt, that is 19 feet for the parking space.
Right, but what, what, what we're saying, and I think the chair is, is saying the same thing. You have an eight by 10 deck. The space that the eight by 10 deck is taking up could be reduced and you could literally put your stairs in and reduce a little bit more of this, it could eliminate the setback issue. It could eliminate, well, it may, it's gonna reduce your lot coverage, maybe back down to your existing. You're only going up by a percentage.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it, it's, it's the fact that you have an eight by 10 deck, I, I know, I totally understand the egress portion of it, but it's, your egress is attached to an eight by 10 deck. And the eight by 10 deck is, is adding to your.
To that total number, sure.
Yeah, it's adding to your lot coverage. It's adding, adding to your setback. It's adding, adding for your open space. Your parking is different, but.
If I reduce the size of that deck down to appease those issues, if you can see where the staircase is, I could come down off of that, off of that back area. I would still be heading over toward that setback. In order to, in order to get that 19 feet from the parking space.
I, I understand. I, I think you could, I think you could, you could, I, I mean, we're not supposed to give design ideas, but I think you could do a set of stairs. You come out the, the door. You turn right. You go down partial to a landing. I don't know how many steps that would be. Then you go back towards the left and another set of, so that your staircase is essentially in the area, it's switchback. So your staircase is essentially in the space of your, your deck. I mean, I, and then I can see, okay, now you have an egress and this is your egress. I, I would feel more comfortable about saying, yep, we're, we're granting either a variance or a special permit for an egress, but you're adding a deck. And, and, and despite, besides the neighborhood being congested, I drove by and this is about as congested as you can get with, with two, you know, two, two residences or two houses on one lot.
I don't disagree with that.
Mr. Kennedy, question. What was this property originally before it became two condos? Was it a single house or what, what was here?
It was, it was a, it was a single property with, with two houses. It was one, one property with two houses and we, we did not subdivide, we could not, did not subdivide the property. So we had to, in order to sell each unit on its, as a freestanding unit, we had to turn it to a condo.
What other question made to the board? So if this change that Peter is talking about were made, how many variances or slash special permits are we still dealing with?
Well, I, I, I don't know what stairs count, but I mean, so your lot coverage, right now existing is 2059 and it went up to 2107. I mean, your eight by 10 deck is gonna, you're gonna.
80 feet.
Yeah, 80 feet. So you're pretty down, down, close to the special permit, eliminating the special permit there or special variance. Your right set, setback stay, in my estimation stays at five feet because you can stay along the side of the house. So you lose that one.
Peter, I think that the special permit would still be required on the lot coverage because he's still gonna be over.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. He's still over the 25%. Yes. Yeah, you're right. Your right setback, I mean, existing is five feet. He's staying at five feet. I don't know how that puts us. And then open space, I mean, open space, you're going from, you know, 55 down to 37%. That's, that's huge. And then I do have a question.
How are we doing?
Can I, can I ask a question about that, the, the space?
Yep.
There was a, a six and a half by 12, almost, I think it was 11 and three-quarter inch unit, a, a, basically a, a doghouse that was there. It looked like a doghouse, but it was a, it was a sub-level structure that was there when we purchased the unit. We removed the same, almost the same square footage of a, of a structure that was off the back of the house that was very dangerous and we removed. Huh?
Was it a shed?
It was a, it was like a shed off the back that had a deck on top of it. The same sized deck that was on top of it, but it was only, it was two and a half feet to the right of where that, where the door is. It was a large structure. I have photos of that structure. I didn't include it in this, in the presentation, but and we removed because it was dangerous. And so when we, when we looked at the plan of replacing the deck, it was basically replacing. And so when we, when we looked at the plan of replacing the deck, it was basically replacing the deck that was there in kind without the structure on it, but moving it over. I get that the, uh, the idea of putting the staircase further over is pushing us over the lot line more. But our actual open space was really not decreased from what was already there, it was the same sized structure. And if you look on the plan.
Froze again.
Uh, to one fifty-six rear.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, you keep freezing and we can't understand what you're saying.
That was submitted from Boston survey, you can see the structure in the back there with the staircase going out to the left. Toward the driveway. That structure was the same size as, uh, and almost a little bit larger than what we're, what we're, uh, proposing here. We just pushed it to the right side and pushed the staircase off to the right.
I, I didn't hear all of what he was saying. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
You keep cutting in and out, I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure if it's your internet connection or if you're not close enough to your device, but we didn't hear half of what you just said.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what it is that, uh, that you're hearing, I am connected directly to my, to my, um, router. Can I, can I call, can you give me one moment and I will dial in on my phone?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, give me one moment, I'll dial in. I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna mute myself so you don't hear me twice.
Yep. Actually, you should turn the volume down on your device as well, so we don't get feedback when one of us speaks.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, there you go. Okay, better, thank you. So if you go to the, um, what I was saying about the, uh, there was a structure that was, uh, that was on, that was there on the house prior to, uh, that was when we purchased it. And what we did was, we removed that structure, that, um, basically that shed that was underneath with a deck on top of it. And that shed, uh, if you look on the proposal where it says the original conditions, uh, from Boston survey. You can see that that was on that, on the house there, and there was a staircase coming down headed toward the, um, toward the driveway. And what, what we did was we removed that structure and the deck that was on top of it. And we moved, our idea was to move it to the right side. When you walk out the door and put the staircase over on the right. So it was essentially a replacement of the deck that was there, but without that, that shed underneath it. And then giving us the ability to put that parking space behind it. So we had, there was more, there was actually more square footage of the house that was taking up that open air space than what we are presenting right now. So again, I'm not, I'm, I'm looking for, my concern really is egress here, it's not necessarily about deck.
Yeah, and I, I, unfortunately, I think you're, the deck is creating issues as well, I mean, egress is one thing, we all know you need egress out of the building, but the deck is adding.
Yeah.
Thanks to the, um, I, I got one more question on the, on the.
I appreciate that.
We call it our, our kind of our cheat sheet, but it's, it's basically the dimensional requirements and, um. For parking, obviously four is allowed, um, it's, it's showing two is existing and then the proposed is three. I mean, you're showing two, uh, cars in, in the lot, one and two, but I, where, where would be the third parking space? Is it that Keystone River Rock area or?
No, there is a, there's a garage, there's a garage at one fifty-six. There's a, there's a garage for one fifty-six, that is the third space. So the two, there's one in, indoor, indoor space for, uh, for one fifty-six and one outdoor, and then one indoor space for one fifty. We did not go down the path of a second space for one fifty, uh, on that, uh, for one fifty there. Because we know that the neighbor next door to us objected to that, so we did not try to create another parking space there. We just put Keystone down and left it as is.
Yeah, but that parking space would have put you in better, a better situation because you would have been in compliance. Right now, you're.
I was in a constant battle with my neighbor about that space.
I understand that.
I just didn't wanna go there anymore, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We could still go down that path, but I, I just didn't wanna go down that.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone have any more questions?
That was not gonna be a legal spot.
Uh, are we talking to the applicant now? Would everybody please be quiet?
With the regulations, sorry.
Um, do any of the members have any questions for the applicant?
Um. I'm, I'm gonna, I feel like I'm sitting here behind the eight ball. Looks like we're being asked to make a bunch of decisions based upon work that's already done. Where one would think, before you decide to do a project like this, that you would have, have come before the board to find out what you could do. And I'm just, I'm having a problem with, uh. Did we recently, I wanna say in the last three, four months, that we have a situation where, when you get into the number of special permits or variances. On a non-conforming piece of property that you can't have. A number more than whatever it was, two or three, which, do you remember that case, Watson?
David, do you wanna keep that question for deliberation?
I'm sure I can hold it back for that.
Only because I wanna get through the question, the public comment period next, and then.
Yes, I'm with him, no problem.
Do you mind?
Hey, just one, one, one technical thing with the, the Zoom meeting, um, I don't know who has phone number four nine zero zero one at the end. Is that you, Mr. Kennedy?
That is me.
Okay, so the device that you're, you're using to, for video, you need to turn the volume down because every time one of us speaks, it comes over your phone and as feedback.
My speaker is off, I'll, I'll mute you on my phone too, my speaker is off on my computer, uh, and so, and so is the, uh, my microphone.
Okay, all right, great, I'm just, I'm looking at who's, who's causing the feedback, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll mute you though right now.
Okay.
All right, I have no more questions right now.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant before we proceed to the next step?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so the next step in the process is that we ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the applicant. And, um, if so, I'm gonna unmute as many people as I can here, if you're, if you're muted, just unmute yourself if you want to speak. And, um, we will take in discussion from anybody who would like to speak in favor of the applicant at this time.
You can also use chat if you'd like to.
That's right.
Put your comment in chat.
So is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Try and unmute all if you have to.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
What's that? I would like to speak clear, but, um.
Okay, what is your name? Just give us your name and your address.
Sure, my name is Annie Wachtel, I live at sixteen forty Steps Lane.
Sixteen forty Steps?
Yes.
And you're speaking in favor?
Speaking in favor, can I elaborate or no?
Yeah.
Sure, of course.
Just wanna say, cause I'm the one that sold this house to Mr. Kennedy, it was originally three houses on one deed. And a while ago, one was sold off, then it was two houses on one deed, very typical in the hot for the generational houses to all occur. So it was all those homes from, since the nineteen hundreds. It isn't that he added anything to this, just wanna be sure that comes across clearly because, if anything, I think he's actually taken away. From the structures that existed there, so there's less there, it is a crowded part of town, but he's not one adding to the crowding. So I just wanted to be sure that was clear. In addition, the, what we're calling a shed was really a part of the house that was attached to the house, it had a door right from the basement that went out. There was like a, an area underneath, what were the existences then? And then this big odd dirt room, which is very creepy looking, and not in good shape, but definitely unsafe, and that is what he took away. Which is unfortunately also what took the egress away that did exist. That's all I wanna say.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the applicant, applicant, uh, applicant, application? So if there's no one else who would like to speak in favor of the applicant?
Hi, yes. Hi, yes, my name's Wilson.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again? I couldn't hear it.
Wilson Tom.
Wilson.
Tom, T O M.
Tom. And what's your address, sir?
Uh, I'm on Ten New Street in East Austin, but I'm actually the, uh, my wife and I are the buyers.
Buyers of?
Of this, sorry.
Unit? Okay, and what did you wanna say, sir?
Well, basically, I mean, uh, with, with regards to whether there's, uh, stairs or, or the actual deck where Mr. Kennedy is actually proposing. If, if it's in fact that there's gonna be stairs, what I would, would wanna try to compress upon is that at the top of the stairs, there will be some form of landing. So that way, if we were coming up with groceries or something like that, that we could just actually plop them down, get the door open as opposed to just stairs, if you, if you kinda know what I'm saying. Not necessarily the eight by ten foot deck that is be, that is, uh, being proposed, but at least some form of landing, maybe like a four by four, somewhat, somewhere around there. Uh, of a landing at the top of the stairs that leads up to the door.
Did you wanna say anything else, sir?
Uh, bas, and basically that, I, I don't think that anything that's going to be done is gonna be that invasive with regards to what is, is already there. But yes, I think that's, that should be it.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, is there anyone present on Zoom here who would like to speak in opposition of the application? Does anyone speak in opposition of the application? Nope, okay, all right, so at this point, what we will do is we will move on. We have just had our public comment period, and now we will go into deliberation, this is when the board members speak and, um, other people really can't speak to us during this time unless it's an emergency. And then, uh, of course, let us know if there's an emergency, but we will discuss the matter and we'll probably have some motions and we'll try to figure out the next steps. And if, Mr. Kennedy, if you could sit, sit there and say, say accessible in case we need to have any questions, that'd be great. Okay, so, everybody, let's get started, what does everybody think about this matter?
All right, so let me go back to what I was saying, I feel like, I feel like we're being called in to make decisions on a, on something that. Some of these, some of these should have been requested before any work. So, you know, we, we, we're kind of in a situation where, okay, we've sold property, we've got another buyer, and now we're trying to figure out how to squeeze everything into. A non-conform, for non-conformities, which is a lot. Recently, did we have a case regarding, uh, the number of non-conformities that were allowed in, or number of special permits were allowed in a non-conforming property?
I'm trying to.
I think we had, we, this issue was raised before where someone came in seeking several pieces and it was, it was excessive, and we talked about it. I don't know if there's any actual limit legally, um, we can take a look in the bylaws, like in.
Yeah, Peter. I'm scanning now.
Yeah, cause I, I remember something.
This is what we need, Max.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with the number of areas of relief that they're requesting. It does make it more difficult for us to grant it, obviously, when there's more than, you know, one or two pieces of relief needed. It almost seems impossible in a way, when you're looking at it and saying, can I, can I even grant all this relief? Um, I took a look at the parking and the plan that we have, um, well, in the zoning bylaws, I'll show you all right now, the table. Is two point oh for a dwelling unit, um, so that's pretty straightforward. But we can grant that relief with a special permit according to previous part of this section, I did look that up earlier. So that's something we could grant if we chose. I guess it's still difficult to get past this issue with the right side egress for me, what does everybody else think?
I'm, I'm the same way, at one, I mean, one, you're one foot on the property line, I mean, isn't it with a fence, you gotta leave six inches of. The other person's property so that in case there's an error, I mean, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Peter on that reconfiguration of the stairs, so they sort of either drop under, under the deck. And stay within that same, um, uh, distance now of five feet. I've just, my concern is like the public safety access, you know, fire and EMS, like if they only had an option to come up that side, it just knows a fence there, it's just. One foot, just, I think, too close.
And, and getting underneath, I mean, to Mr. Kennedy's point, he said, you know, you wouldn't be able to run under there, but, you know, people would be able to pass under there. That just, that's, that's not, um, really, you know, good for the fire department to have to maneuver around a set of stairs and, and maybe duck or whatever.
If they have apparatus, ladders, any kind of equipment, things like that is a problem, tons of problem.
Sweet, uh, Jess, let me go back to the, to the parking for a sec. So, the party that is not going to get to two spots is the.
Back.
Existing at number one fifty, correct?
Yes.
All right, so. Is that an issue we need to be looking at?
It is, because we only have three spaces when four are retired.
Right, so, so we're, we're dealing with both lots, with, with both buildings per se.
Right, it's one lot. One lot for us, and, you know, whether a certificate of occupancy is issued for that first one, one fifty, I don't know how that could possibly have happened. When this whole condominium project hasn't been before us previously, um.
Yeah, really, how, how does that?
How's that question for me? I don't know how that happened.
Does the planning board?
Can I respond to that?
No.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, please, do it.
Sure.
Um, number one, the one fifty is a seven hundred and seventy square foot, one bedroom, one bath unit. And it was purchased under the, under the pretense of one parking space, uh, because, because it is a one bedroom, one bath.
It doesn't, that has no bearing on it, the zoning bylaw requires a residence to have two.
I understand that, um, there was, there was only literal, realistically two parking spaces there. Again, someone could have said they could have four tandem parking spaces on that, in the driveway that was there. That's not what I was going after, I was, I said, I could line up five cars in that driveway, yeah, and. Yeah, and it's, it's just, that's just not what I would, the way I would sell it.
Mr. Kennedy, did you get a certificate of occupancy for that first unit from the town?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
With, with the knowledge, with the knowledge that they only could have one spot?
Yes.
Because that would have to come before us, would it not?
Right.
The plan was, the plan was recommended by the building department that we submitted. I had four different plans for parking. It was recommended by the building department and it was proposed to, to Concom before we did the work. And they, I told, when we went to Concom with this back in the summer of last year, and by the way, this was actually originally proposed, was sent, uh, to the building department in September of last year. This is not something that's, that's late. It's getting to you guys very late. It was something that was originally submitted back in September. This has been going on for a long time. It got to you guys in, in May, in early May. But this is not, this is not something new. I understand that it is new for you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, but, so it was denied, it was denied on April fifteenth of this year.
Correct, after the, after the second proposal was sent through. We, we recommit it with, with Wayne.
Nothing was denied prior to that?
Uh, it was not denied prior to that, and that's why we became, we went and we did the work, uh, on the inside and up front and did the deck so we could show what we were actually doing to the house, uh, the, the level of work that we were, that we were pursuing on the house. And we finished that, that up and then came back and said, okay, let's show them the materials, what we're, what we're going after, uh, what we're trying to do here. We're trying to do the right thing and the right project. But if we need to scale it back, that's okay. I'm okay with that.
So, so if this went, if this went to the building department in April, is, when did you get your certificate for occupancy on the rear unit? Or is, because, because what I don't understand, I still don't understand that you were given a permit, a certi, certificate of occupancy for a residence that only has one parking spot and it never went to the, either the planning board or the zoning board. It just, I mean, and, and I'm not blaming you, Mr. Kennedy, I'm just questioning.
I can hand you, I can, I can, I can send you the CO.
We're not saying we don't believe you, we're just saying.
Yeah, we're just, it just doesn't.
Well, you, yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, at the, at the very beginning, you mentioned that you spent a long time dealing with a neighbor trying to get a second parking spot. And whoever that person is, uh, did not want to give you a space.
There was an objection to the parking space being that close to their, to their house.
Okay, because it wouldn't have had setbacks?
It wouldn't have, um, it wouldn't have met, well, it would have met setback on that side, actually, because, uh, it would have met setback there. It was recommended by Wayne, uh, not to reduce the size, the width of the staircase that would have given us the, the width of the parking space we needed. I was willing to do that. But it was recommended not to do that, not to change the configuration of the staircase for one fifty in order to accommodate that, that parking space.
So which neighbor was it that was objecting?
Uh, it was, it was the left neighbor, the, the one to the left of us, one forty-four.
And you sold this unit, you have the other unit to Filomena in December, it looks like.
Correct.
December two thousand nineteen. I'm looking at the deed.
I, I assume, I assume that person is, was invited as an offender?
Uh, Filomena? So, yes, Filomena was invited. I have an email from her that said she couldn't make it. Uh, I, I can read it for you. I can read the email for you, and I'm happy to, to send that to you as well. From her, let me see here, one second. This was dated this evening at six thirty-five PM. Good evening, Mr. Kennedy. I will try to attend the hearing this evening. In case I am unable to attend, I have no problem. Uh, no objections to your building deck at the back of one fifty-six Fast Point Road as previously specified. Thanks, Phil, Lena, Dante, one fifty, Fast Point, Nahon, Mass. Jocelyn, if you'd like, I can send this to you right now.
Don't send anything to me. Send it to the building department, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I have a clarification. That is not a letter or an email from the person that had a problem with the parking space. That's the person that bought your other unit. Is that correct?
Say that again?
The email you just read, is that from the person that had an issue with the parking?
No.
Okay, that was the question. So I want to make sure there was this confusion there.
And the person that had an issue with the parking is on the, is on the line. They are here and didn't object when they were, when it was asked.
What's that person's name?
Uh, I see Cecilia Rollo on the phone and she, uh, someone from there did say something.
Okay.
Cecile.
Do you want to hear from us? Would you like to hear from us?
Sure.
If you want to make a statement, up to you. So we asked earlier about who might like to speak and behave in, either in favor or against the, um, petition, but no one spoke.
Yeah, we, we, indeed, we do not oppose the property having, uh, three parking spaces. We did oppose early on a fourth parking space, which, which is not part of the current plan for which Mr. Kennedy is seeking approval. We did approve his, we did oppose historically a fourth parking space because the width simply isn't there. And we believe that a SUV would not fit between the staircase of one fifty and our property line. But we do not object to the property having three parking spaces as is currently, um, being sought.
Okay, so, just as an FYI, according to the plan, the parking plan, the, it says the, the, um, the width of that space is eight feet, six inches by twenty feet, three-eighths piece on a river rock. The dimensional requirement for a parking space is eight feet by eighteen feet. So that space legally is a parking space. Um, and whether, whether they're saying it's not or it isn't, that's legally a parking space.
It was our understanding that there was not enough space between our property boundary and the staircase because the staircase could not be narrowed.
Well, uh, if the, if the dimensions on this sheet of paper I have at eight foot, six inches and twenty feet is correct, um, I am, I'm trying to find the section that I just read.
Peter, you are correct. There's eight foot, three inches from the left side of the staircase going up into one fifty to the property line. Again, we weren't going down that path.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going down a path. I'm just basically saying that is a legal parking space according to the bylaws of the, the town of Nahon. So if the person at one fifty chooses to use it as a parking space, they can. Um, and, and, yeah, quite frankly, on your application, you're showing three parking spaces and you need a special permit because you only have three parking spaces. You're, you're hurting yourself in this particular situation.
I'm trying to be. I'm trying to be non-confrontational in this.
I, I understand that. Yeah.
Okay, so Peter, let me, let me go back to, so technically, there are four parking spots here. One is in the garage, two are out back of, between one fifty-six and one fifty. The other one is next to one fifty, correct?
Yeah, I'm just, I just, Dave, I want to verify that I read. And I'm trying to find, I apologize.
We're going to go back to our deliberations now, okay? So I want to, everybody else stay on mute, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I want to find that, because I know where you're getting at, Dave.
Peter, here are the parking regulations right here.
Yeah.
Um, and here's the table of parking. Is it, what, what are you looking for, the table?
No, no, it was, it's up by that, it's up by, um, again, I'm looking at this at a, it's the, the size of the parking space. If you scroll back up, there's a dimension for angled parking and a dimension for straight parking.
Yes.
If I read, if I, if my eyes didn't deceive me.
Right, there, this one, sorry.
Angle is twelve feet and I thought I saw eight, an eight foot width.
The depth should be at least eighteen feet and twenty-two feet for parallel. Space should be at least eight feet wide.
Exactly, so, so, so essentially, they have, he has four parking space, or, or this lot has four parking.
We don't know if with that particular parking space, but it's in the setback. And we, we, would, you're saying that if need be, there's a parking space there?
Well, no, what I'm, well, what do you mean a setback?
Well, this, this neighbor was saying that it's close to their house.
So they need, so is, does a, do you need a ten foot setback for a parking space to start?
Minimum width of highway is two ways to have it two feet.
There's no setback on that space because these were all one property at one point. I don't know how they impose a ten foot setback on that pre-existing structure.
It's pre-existent before, the structure was probably built before the.
I don't think, Peter.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what you guys think. What's everybody think?
Jocelyn, could you repeat that? I missed what you said.
Peter, and, and the board, are you saying that you want to call that last space, maxil space?
I, I don't know if it's a space, but it, it's the proper size for a space. You may be correct. It doesn't have the setback.
Okay.
But I don't know what the set, does it need a full?
Nobody has a setback because it's all non-conforming, so it's kind of material.
Right, right.
But I'm, I'm looking at this from a perspective of when you have four special permits, does this equate, does this take one of the special permits away because technically it is a?
No, um, I, I think because of setbacks, we'd have to dig into that a little bit further. I will say this, there, I, I didn't find anything related to the number of special permisses, yeah, permisses, permits or variances. So whether you have one or a hundred, I don't know that it makes a difference. There is nothing in the bylaw that dictates that you can, um, that you, you, you know, you can't apply for.
Caps the number.
Yeah, there's no cap, so I didn't see anything on that.
Okay, and board members, I have a chat question that came in from Cecilia Rollo at eight twenty-three, and she said, um, would you please state once more the actual space measurement versus space requirement for legal parking space? We are measuring less than eight feet in width. And so, right, we know that.
Eight feet by eighteen.
Eight by eighteen is the requirement, Ms. Rollo? Okay, so the problem is that, that plan that we are looking at, that parking plan, it's not, it's not done by an engineer, it's not stamped or anything like that, says eight foot by twenty. Um, that, the thing that we, the thing that we're talking about, but I think we need to move on from that. All right, so, did, everybody, what is your impression at this time?
Well, I, I feel like we're trying to put Band-Aids on something, on, you know, on, on something that's basically already done. And we're, and we're now looking at a house that's about to be sold, and we have to figure out how to put another, another exit to the house properly.
Right.
Right, I, I, what really bothers me is the one foot or less. I, I think that's a, you know, if you, if, if you ask me if it's substantially detrimental, I think it is because it doesn't provide proper, um, access. I mean, it, five feet is bad enough, but one foot doesn't allow firefighters to get through, doesn't allow, you know, any type of, uh, vehicle, uh, I mean, uh, emergency personnel to, to get through there. I, again, I, I feel that there is a, while I understand that the new owner, uh, and I, I abide by that, but, you know, I, um, if, if they had come to us instead of an eight by ten duck and had a four by four platform with a set of stairs for egress, that would be more understandable than an eight by ten deck and the stairs being one foot off the property line. I mean, we're, we were just talking about the, you know, the, the parking space. Yeah, if there's, if there truly is eight feet of space over there, there's enough for parking. But to Jocelyn's point, there still is no setback. It's, you're basically, you're parking right up against somebody else's residence.
He didn't apply for that.
No, no, I understand, but, but I'm just, I'm kind of pointing out, you know, the, um, the, the issues. But I, I have the biggest problem with the setback. I think it's a danger and a hazard. I, I, you know, I mean, when you go from, uh, you know, fifty-five percent open space to thirty-seven percent, that's a, that's a huge, um, that's a huge difference. The parking, uh, that's, it's complex, it complicates it a little bit, but, um, again, I'm more, um, I'm more looking at that setback in the open space.
I, Peter, I totally agree with you there. I, I don't see how, I don't see how we could allow that to happen. We'd be setting the precedent for other properties, especially down in that area, which I certainly don't want to do. I mean, if there's a way to put a four by four, you know, landing on, get the stairs away from the property line, you know, let's, you know, have that, see that playing, I mean, you know, and, you know, we hear it. We can't, we can't redesign it here.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah.
I would agree with that, um, and so at this point in time, what I would suggest is that we, we give the applicant the opportunity to, um, if everybody's Donna and David McCool, you all were seeing, had same mind before we came on. So once we deny, if we deny this petition, it would be a problem for the owner to have to come back. If we were presented with a new plan, Mr. Kennedy, that shows the, um, the omission of that deck and the stairs in place of that deck, it sounds like the memo is probably not guaranteeing anything now, we don't know, um, that maybe we'd be in a closer place. We still have to deal with the, the lock coverage may go down. The, um, plus the open space is still going to be less.
Yeah, but I, I'm a little more agreeable to a landing and a set of stairs because it's an egress. And it's, it, you know, you need to give people an egress.
Plus, if we can see, figure out that certificate of occupancy for that other dwelling with only the one space, I'd be interested to see that. So I know that you want to sell right now and you're in a, you'll need the egress to do that. Maybe the, I don't know if the building inspector would allow you to put up some temporary stairs, the small, that might be, like, I don't know if that would work, but, um, is anyone else, David Cole, Donna, anybody, Peter, do you have any more comments on that piece?
Yeah, I don't.
I, I have a problem with the one foot. You can't get a stretch out. You couldn't get anything. I mean, it's, it could be catastrophic. It could be deadly.
It's not, that's not going to fly. I agree.
I mean, I, I think it's.
With that, I, I have no issue with that. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with restructuring that, that staircase to landing uh, and doing a switchback for the egress. The, the issue for this pro, for this unit is egress. It's not having another deck. Again, we've got plenty of decks off the front. That's not the issue here for me.
So.
It really is egress.
Jocelyn, if I might, um, recommendation, Mr. Kennedy, would be to withdraw this petition without, um, prejudice and redesign and come back. If, if we make a decision tonight, you'll be held to two years of not being able to do anything. Is it two years, Jocelyn?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's, that would be my recommendation. Um, I, I think everybody on the board is really uncomfortable with this one foot setback. You know, we certainly can look into the parking and, um, and, uh, you know, lock coverage may change and open space will even go, go, you know, go in the right, or stay in the right direction, so.
Yeah, again, can I, can I just remind that that open space and the, and the percentage is, we are less than what we were originally from when we purchased the original house. is, we are less than what we were originally, from when we purchased the original house. We, and will be further, less than we were originally with the, with the original structure.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you may want to, you may, when you, you know, if you reapply, you may want to talk to the building inspector about that because, you know, we're, we, we just look at this as an official document and I don't know why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I have a question for the members. Before you go, Mr. Kennedy, I want a question for the members. If, if, just speaking to David, Donna and Peter, if instead of withdrawing and reapplying, which I, you know-
Can we continue it?
Yeah.
How does everybody feel about continuing it and letting Mr. Kennedy-
Yeah, I'd rather continue.
Actually, that's a better idea because then he doesn't have to pay.
Right. I'd rather, in fairness, continue, continue it.
It seems a little more fair, right? Although we've done all we can to try and do this meeting, but.
Well, except Jocelyn.
I, I actually have another plan for, for an egress.
I'm afraid we may not be able to because this is Donna's last night. I do apologize.
This should be my last night, but.
Would you sit just one more time?
I've been hearing that for how long?
I know, I know.
Yeah, yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Just so they continue, if we could continue with Jocelyn.
Yeah.
But it was all dependent upon Donna and she just said yes, she would do it.
So do, do we need to make a motion for that?
We should make a motion.
All right. I, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing to allow Mr. Kennedy to read, you know, I guess, readjust his design.
Okay.
Yes, I second the motion, David McCool.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? And can I do a roll call of the members?
Yeah, I'm in favor. Peter Barber, I'm in favor.
David McCool, I'm in favor. Aye.
Donna LeLeonardo in favor?
David Walsh in favor.
And Jocelyn Campbell, I'm in favor of the continuance as well. So we have to always continue to a date certain. And so we should go for, I think our scheduled meeting in August would be the next time unless somebody wants to try and do it sooner. What do you guys think?
Looking at a calendar.
Jocelyn, what's that date in August? It would be the 11th, correct, second?
Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday would be the 11th. And we need two weeks of notification anyways, right? Newspaper?
Well, we don't have to re-advertise if we're continuing.
Right.
Oh, okay. All right.
So.
Well, August 11th, that looks good.
Uh, it looks good for me.
For all of the members, can, can anybody do, it doesn't matter to me, I'm, I'm going to be away, but I'll, I can log in Zoom from my vacation.
Oh.
It's the nature of this life.
Yeah.
What day are we suggesting? The same date?
Yeah, August 11th.
11th, which is a Tuesday. It's not one of our scheduled meeting dates because we're supposed to meet the second Wednesday of every month when we have hearings.
That would be the 12th.
Right. But, you know, but that's, whatever you guys want to do, I can do, I can do the-
I don't care. I, I just came up with the 11th because it was Tuesday this time.
Yeah. We only do Wednesdays anyway because of Max. Max is around them.
This is true. All right. So you want to do the 11th then or the 4th? 11th, 11th. Okay, let's look at this.
Jocelyn, I can submit that new plan on Monday.
All right. You do the new plan. And could you give us a better parking plan that's, did your engineer do this, who did the parking plan for you?
Do you want me to, do you want me to add the parking to the plan? I can add a space there.
I, I mean, if it fits, it fits, but I, I'm worried about the setback. I, you may want to talk to Wayne about it because I'm not sure what that setback is.
And make sure you include a copy of your certificate of occupancy for the 150 as well in your package.
I will, yeah.
And this is better for you, Mr. Kennedy, because now you don't have to pay, you don't have to, we don't have to re-advertise, wait weeks.
I get it.
And if you reapply, we also have to give the boards another 35 days. We're talking-
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Yeah. I'm on the design review board, so I understand.
Right. And I'm, and I'm going to do it on my vacation and Donna is already resigned from the board, but she's willing to stick on to one more hearing. So we're all kind of-
I appreciate that from both of you very much. Thank you.
All right.
All right. So that's it for tonight.
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second, second motion, David McCool.
No objections. Anybody in favor? Roll call.
Peter Barber, aye.
Aye, David McCool, aye.
Donna LeLeonardo, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. All right, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.